Welcome to the Judiciary Committee hearing. My name is Carl Rhodes. I'm Chair of the Committee. This Zoom meeting and YouTube livestream event will include our 9:30 agenda. Other members of the Committee are Vice Chair Mike Gabbert, Senator Zola Ponte, Senator Manchurian, and Alwana. In the unlikely event we have to abruptly end this, sorry, I don't know if anybody's being able to hear me. In the unlikely event that we have to abruptly end this hearing due to major technical difficulties, the Committee will reconvene to discuss any outstanding business on Thursday, February 9 at 9:45 here in room 016 in a public notice that we post on the Legislative website. For those testifying remotely, you'll be muted and video disabled until it's your turn to go. And for everybody both here and on Zoom land, there's a two-minute time limit. Often, members have questions for you, so if you can hang around after questioning, you may get called back up if you wish to be. Okay, let's go ahead and start it. First bill of the day is SB 34. This amends the taxes withheld on the amount realized by non-residents from the disposition of Hawaii residential real property from the current 7.25% to 75%. First up on SB 34 is Gary Sugunuma, Director of Department of Taxation. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair Rhodes, Vice Chair Gabbert, and members of the Committee. I am Gary Sugunuma, Director of Taxation. We submitted written testimony regarding just the increase in the withholding amount of 7.25% to 75%. Would you like me to explain or?
Go ahead.
Okay, so the withholding amount, as you folks know, is on non-resident sellers is to approximate the amount of capital gains tax that may be owing in the sale. And so the amount of tax is calculated on the net amount from the sale. So after any adjustments to the basis and after deductions for any costs incurred, closing costs and costs incurred with the sale. And so the amount to be withheld is calculated on the gross amount, which in most cases, because the capital gains tax is at 7.25%, isn't enough, ordinarily, it's going to be enough to cover the amount of taxes, capital gains taxes that would be owed. And so we just wanted to point that out. So what will happen if you raise it to 75%, what that potentially does is it creates a situation where non-resident sellers will sell, overpay, or will an amount that's higher than required will be withheld from them. And then they would come in for a refund for the rest. And then it just creates a whole lot of refund requests that we have to deal with.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Lindsay Garcia, Director of Advocacy for the Hawaii Realtors. In opposition? Opposition, okay. Joe Kent, Grassroots Institute of Hawaii, with comments. Alicia Humistan for Rental Buy Owner-Awardee Awareness Association on Zoom. Alicia Humistan. Okay, we'll come back to her if she shows up. In opposition. Tam Yamachika, Tax Foundation of Hawaii, with comments. Kristen Alice, Testifying for Hope Services Hawaii. Oh, here. Good morning.
Morning. Morning. Thank you for introducing this bill. I was really excited to hear about it on news and even more excited to be here to testify and strong support of it. So I am Kristen Alice. I am from Hope Services Hawaii. We are the Big Island's largest homeless services provider. It is a nonprofit organization. I just want to share some demographic information. About half of the people we serve identify as Native Hawaiian. The majority of the people we serve are lifelong or long-term, like over 20-year residents of Hawaii. And one-third of the people that we serve are children. That's unacceptable. And we, I like to see this bill because this is finally, this is stepping into the duty that our government has to serve local people. Serving profits of out-of-state buyers is not serving local people. And in fact, it's pushing people into poverty and into homelessness. And you know, whether you, whether there's compassion for people experiencing homelessness or not, this bill would save us money in the long run as well because we would have less funding needed for homeless services and less people needing to utilize emergency services and things like that. I wanted to make a couple of suggestions. One would be to specifically exclude real estate investment trusts, whether they are registered in the state or not. That would possibly prevent situations like what happened at my old apartment complex, YK Villas, where there were mass evictions by a company that stated it plans to sell the property. The other suggestion I have would be to close a potential loophole, which would be for out-of-state buyers to come and register as Hawaii residents right before selling. So just those things to look at. And please consider designating the revenue to those places that have been most severely impacted by this influx. So homeless services, animal shelters, you know, people getting evicted and don't have a place for their animals to go, and other social services that have been neglected. Thank you so much. Really appreciate the spell. Strong support.
Thank you very much. All right, tech support, can you put up the countdown clock?
Yeah, that's very close.
Or you're, you're, you're doing it. Okay, so just let me know when. Yeah, okay, great. Okay, next up, we have Natalie Owassa in opposition. Next, we have Makana Hicks in support. Next is Evan Weber, Testifying for R. Hawaii. Also in support, Kaala Clark in support. Okay, let's see, Neil Halsted with comments. If I run by you and you're here, please come on up. Andrew Coslin in support. Roderick Yu in opposition. Kama Ma La Hoya with comments. John Chang in opposition. Alyssandra Dove in support. Skylar Akina in support. Jamie Delacuesta in support. Bren Miranda in support. Amy Fung in support. Spencer in support. Tyler Kinaman in support. Okay, the next page is an entire page of support except for one that has comments. That's a whole page. And there's another whole page, same thing, all in support except one with comments. And then there's another page where there is all, almost all in support, two comments and one opposition. Another page with all support except for two oppositions. Another page, all in support with one opposition, except for one opposition. Another page, all in support. And then two final names in support. So if you'd like to, so at this point, if anybody would like to testify on SB 34, please come forward or please identify yourself on Zoom. Okay, seeing now members' questions. Senator Alwana.
Question for DOTAC, please. Gary, thanks for showing up and clarifying what this would do. Knowing that this wouldn't be a viable solution, we would have to go after that capital gain tax. Could we raise that capital gain tax all the way up? Or, and then make a comma in a clause, a comma in a rate where residents don't got to pay that? They stay status quo what it is right now?
I mean, in terms of raising, I guess, any tax, I think it's, the Legislature certainly has that authority. I cannot answer that question because I think it does call into questions, maybe some, some legal issues. Anytime treating local residents differently than non-residents. I did come from the Attorney General's Office before taking this position, so I would just leave it at that.
Oh, good. I want, I want to hear because we're looking for a solution to this problem. There's a lot of people who support it. Obviously, this vessel's not going to be the way unless we can change it, so.
In terms of raising, yes. But you would probably need to consult with the Attorney General's Office in connection with any kind of decision like that, where you base, the rate may be different for resident versus non-resident.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Your, I. The tax, please just remain. I have a question. Okay, so I understand that by just doing the withholding, you're not doing an actual tax because then they can claim the refund, right?
Yeah.
But by doing the withholding, you can gain interest for the time period of the time that's being withheld. So did you do any kind of calculation as to, I guess, for lack of better term, the asset of holding the money for a period of time? For as much as a year until they finally file their taxes?
I have not done that. So that would be assuming the rate was, the withholding rate was raised to 75%.
Right. And then they file their tax like a year. Sometimes they file extensions, maybe two years later, right?
I can, I can request that information for you.
Right. I mean, Hawaii doesn't have to pay interest on the amount withheld if they did not file their taxes. I don't think they do.
Typically, interest applies to the amount, I believe.
It's still, it's still, it's still applicable.
But I'll check on that and get back to you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you. Members have other questions?
You're welcome.
Anything else? Okay. Uh, thank you very much for being here. We'll go ahead and move on to SB 203. Relating to complaints alleging violations of campaign spending laws. This allows the Campaign Spending Commission to treat a respondent's failure to explain or otherwise respond to a complaint alleging a violation of campaign spending laws as an admission that a violation has occurred. First up on 203 is Gary Cam, General Counsel for Campaign Spending Commission.
Morning. Thank you, Chair Rhodes, Vice Chair Gabbert, members of the Committee. What the Commission is seeking here is sort of like having a procedural default in the Chapter 92 setting. I think the Commission is the only state agency that can arrive at decisions at Chapter 92 hearings. And then it will be a contested case. Most agencies have to start at the contested case proceedings where, you know, a default or failing to answer is provided. We're just seeking this for the Chapter 92 level. Because right now, the Commission order basically says that the respondent didn't show up, the respondent didn't respond to the complaint. So this would give us a mechanism and say, well, they didn't, they didn't provide a response, so we're going to treat it as, well, the draft is admission here. But based on objections in the House Judiciary Committee, we're asking that admission be changed to a presumption.
Okay. All right, thank you. Next is Daniel Foley, Commissioner of improved standards of official conduct, in support. Natalie Owassa in opposition, and Lynn Madison in support. Anyone else wish to testify on SB 203, 203? Seeing now members' questions?
Yes, I do. Thank you. Okay, I, I have to admit, just like I showed up late for this hearing, I'm one of those who kind of missed the deadline sometimes. This one would actually, is there a way for minor, like I was like five minutes late for this hearing? Is there a way, instead of it being treated as an actual admission or presumption, that there be some kind of middle ground for a violation or failing to?
Well, if the respondent does not answer complaint and does not show up at the hearing, which, you know, they, they don't have to answer the complaints in writing. They can show up to the, at the Chapter 92 agency meeting to contest the complaint. So if, assuming that they don't, they don't do either, you know, respond to the complaint and then show up at the agency meeting?
Or if they respond late, like that, that was my example.
If they respond late but prior to the meeting, that's a response.
Okay, what about if they failed, if they had a good reason for not showing up at the meeting?
Then they would, well, I think what, what the black and white law would say, you would ask for a contested case hearing because you have 20 days after you receive the order, the preliminary order to ask for a contested case. But, you know, we've had cases where we got, you know, we got communication with the respondent after the hearing. And then we would have, we, we did go in and ask the Commission to to sort of take away that preliminary order and then give the respondent a hearing at the next meeting. So we've done that also. But either way, if there is a, if there is a disagreement with the order, the respondent will have the opportunity to challenge it.
Okay, but that was before this law is passed, though. I mean, as soon as this law is passed, this bill is passed, then basically you can treat it as an admission and then you don't have to, you don't have to do the kind of conciliatory agreements that you're talking about.
I, you know, I don't know if that's going to change how the Commission operates. It's just that now we could put in a preliminary order that there was no response. Therefore, you're treating it as a, there was a presumption of violation. But they still have the right to ask for a contested case.
Okay, so if, if it doesn't change how you folks respond, why do you even need this bill?
Well, it just seems more, it, it's, it's just sort of like having a default judgment. It just seems more proper to have an order where the respondent hasn't shown up or hasn't shown up for the hearing, hasn't submitted anything, any responsive writing. That the Commission's order can, there's a, there's a statutory basis to say, well, it's sort of like a default situation.
But in a default situation, you have 30 days for an appeal or a five-day, 10- to 15-day window for a right, for a motion to be considered. This doesn't allow for that.
Well, they, they can ask for a contested case.
Before we, okay, I don't want to argue with you anymore. Thank you.
Chair.
Senator Zola Ponte, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Cam. Just a few questions on process. This bill is part of those campaign spending commissions package, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Could you tell me a little bit about the process when you send out the notice? And how is that method communicated to the respective person that you're intending to transmit that notice to?
Okay, so going back to the beginning of the process for a candidate. If they, once they spend more than $100 or receive contributions more than $100, or then within 10 days after they register with us?
Right.
Or within 10 days of filing nomination papers, right? So when they register with us, they have to file an organizational report where they tell us their address. You know, for the committee and for the chairs is different and for the treasurer is different. So that's the address that we use. By law, the candidate has to tell us within 10 days, they have to file an amended organizational report within 10 days of any change in that information. So if the address changed, they have to tell us within 10 days, right? If the treasurer changed, they have to submit a, the treasurer has to submit a new, the new treasurer has to submit the filing form where they have to sign that, that they certify that all the reports are correct. So that's the address that we use. We use the address that the candidate has given to us and basically communicate, this is my official address. That's where you send stuff, right? So that's where we start. So when we have a complaint, we, we send, we mail the complaint via first-class mail to that address.
Okay.
And if it doesn't come back, we assume that, that they got it. I mean, they can tell us that they didn't, but.
How, how many days do you give the campaign committee to respond? Or just, does it depend?
They can respond anytime up to the date of the, the Chapter 92 meeting, where that's the first time it's being heard. They, they can also respond at the meeting. They don't have to submit anything before. So then the Commission goes through the complaint. And then at that point, the Commission can do one of four things. The Commission can dismiss the complaint. They can send it back to staff for further investigation. They can make a preliminary determination or probable cause, which is what, what we're dealing with, with, with this, with this presumption. Or they can refer the matter for prosecution. So assuming that, that the, 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 the Commission does a preliminary determination, then that is sent via certified mail, that order, that preliminary order is sent via certified mail to the respondent. And at that point, the respondent has 20 days to ask for a contested case hearing. And if they do, then, then they're afforded a contest.
And as a final follow-up, Chair, thank you for allowing me to ask those questions. As a final follow-up to that, in your rules, or in, in general, I know you said you send it by, you know, by mail, first-class mail. Can you also send it digitally through email?
Oh, we can if the.
Like both, like buy hard copy via mail and electronic?
I don't, I don't know if we do that in all cases. If the candidate has given us their email and asked for it that way, then we certainly will.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cam. Thank you, Chair.
Other questions? If not, Mr. Cam, I have a couple. So this bill applies to both candidate and non-candidate committees, yes?
Yeah.
Okay. So we've talked about the service of the respondent. So the service is mailing it to the address that they gave you or that I gave you personally, which has been the same for a long time in my case. So I guess the other question that comes to my mind is, so you've, you've mailed the thing to them. You don't get a response. When would the presumption kick in? It wouldn't be just like immediately, right? I mean, you don't mail it and then.
Right.
So would it be okay if we put in a, a time period where it's presumed to be a violation? Like a month or something?
Well, you know, I think that the, so if the person didn't respond, doesn't show up, it's said that, that meaning that the, that the complaint was put on the agenda, that is where the Commission will have to render a decision.
Okay, so that, what's, I'm sorry, I think you said 20 days. So the letter goes out, says you're supposed to be, it just gives a date where you're supposed to show up?
Yes.
Okay. Fortunately, I've never had one, so I don't know what it says.
I think, yeah.
So, okay, so basically the presumption would just be that you, you, when, when the, when the hearing or the meeting date is not actually a hearing, right?
It's our agency open sunshine meeting.
Interesting.
Like I, like I was saying, that's unusual for state agencies. Because usually state agencies make decisions on contested matters at a contested case hearing.
Well, the one thing I'm a little concerned about is that, you know, three days later, you say, okay, presume you've got a violation because we haven't heard anything from you. So if, if you're okay with us saying the presumption doesn't kick in until the date of the agency sunshine, the agency open sunshine meeting, that, that seems reasonable to me. Assuming you're, is there a requirement, it, it has to be at least a certain amount of time?
No.
Okay, so.
That, that is reasonable.
Agency open sunshine meeting or at least 20 days? Just in case you guys schedule something sooner than that? I'm not sure, because I don't know how you schedule them. If you don't have a, if you have discretion over when to schedule them.
Yeah, so it has to be scheduled at least six days, right? That's when the agenda is due to be filed. So sometimes it's, it's as late as six days before the meeting and going backward whenever the complaint is prepared.
Okay, but you could, well, if we, if we put the presumption in, then you could just send a letter saying.
If you don't respond.
If you don't respond within 30 days, we're going to schedule a.
Well, except that sometimes a meeting is not 30 days away, it's.
Well, that's what I'm suggesting, that you would have to make it 30 days away. You just have to say, okay, in 30 days or whatever.
Yeah, I, I suppose.
Okay, all right. Okay, I think that's it for me. Other concerned questions? Thanks very much, Mr. Cam, for being here. Okay, next up is SB 494 relating to vacant and abandoned residential property requires counties to establish an expedited procedure to approve demolition permits for vacant and abandoned residential properties. First up on 494 is Gary Sugunuma, Director of Department of Taxation. Morning again.
Hi, good morning. The Department of Taxation does not, does not have any concerns with implementing this measure, but I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Next is Curtis Long, Department of Planning and Permitting for City County Honolulu in support. Council Chair Waters, Honolulu City Council in support. Calvin Seay, zoning committee at Honolulu City Council in support. Tam Yamachika, Tax Foundation of Hawaii, with comments. Ellen Godby Carson in support. That's all the testimonies. Everybody who signed up for SB 494. Does anyone else wish to testify on SB 494? Okay, if not, members' questions?
Yes, I do. All right, DOTAC.
Go ahead.
Hi. So there have been, because I know I've introduced prior years regarding expediting vacant and abandoned, or any kind of property, really. Anything that's abandoned or wanted expedited. But what is DOTAC's position about ensuring that upon sale, because they're talking about non-judicial foreclosures as far as the expedited process, to ensure that all taxes are paid? I mean, right now, it basically allows you folks to do that. But what is, is there a process where you folks put like an automatic lien on these properties? So whether or not it's judicial or non-judicial foreclosures, the state gets paid their taxes?
Yes, as I understand it, I think the non-judicial is just that, right? It's, it's a foreclosure outside of the court process. But our lien rights would still be determined the same way as in a judicial.
But do you folks have like a procedure to ensure that you folks have a lien right before it gets demolished? We put like a notice because the only addition to this, the bill, the only amendment appears to be an expedited process without notice to DOTAC. Wouldn't you folks speak, like to have notice before to ensure that you folks have a lien?
If we're going to be the ones initiating the non-judicial foreclosure, then we would definitely check to make sure that we have a lien, a valid lien that's owing on the property.
Okay, I'm talking about the bill itself, I'm sorry. The statute gives you folks the authority to do that. The bill basically adds in a section where the county is required to do, have an expedited procedure. And in that expedited procedure, it doesn't look like there is a requirement that DOTAC be notified before they do the non-judicial foreclosure or the demolition. I'm just asking whether or not you folks would like an amendment to be given notice?
Yeah, thanks for the clarification. I mean, I, I don't think a notice would, I don't see a downside to having a notice requirement. But what I can do is take this back to my shop, take a better look at it, and then could I get back to you on that? To see if that would really make a difference or if that's really needed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
No questions? Uh, I got a question. Well, I don't know. No, you're the only one here to testify, so I'll ask you the question if you can answer, great. Now I understand. So it looks to me like on page four, lines. Line six and following. "The owner of a residential structure shall establish that the residential structure is vacant by providing the county planning department with sworn savings from each borrower who has at least one loan secured by the parcel." I guess, yeah, I don't know. It, it sounds to me like the, what if the owners, what if one of the owners just says, no, it's not abandoned? I don't know if you want to weigh in on this. I don't know how much. I don't really want to ask you to testify, but on the other hand, you may understand it better than anybody else at this point.
Counsel.
Yeah, sorry. Okay, let me ask you another, a more related tip. So on page five, line 10, it's "Use of power sale, foreclosure, and state taxing foreclosures of vacant and abandoned residences." Can you, are there other situations where you can do none, where you can foreclose non-judicial or use of power? Can you, are there other situations where you can do none, where you can foreclose non judicial or use of power sale? Or would this be a unique situation?
For the state?
For for DOTACs, yeah. Do you always have to use the judicial? Roots?
I I thought so, but I'm probably not the best qualified to answer that. It um. These matters are handled by the Super Recoveries Division of the Attorney General's Office, the tax department.
Okay.
And so. Yeah, I. I'm not exactly sure.
Okay. And then a sort of broader question, is there any reason that the counties can't just do this themselves that you're aware of? Set up a, set up a, an expedited procedure?
I'm I'm not aware.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much. Sorry to ask all these questions out of field, that's what happens when nobody, when only one person shows up, so.
Okay.
Thank you for being here. Other, members other questions? Okay. Alright, we'll move on then. Uh, let's see, next up is uh SB twelve forty. This establishes the offensive bribery of an elected official or department head as a class B felony with the maximum penalty of two hundred fifty thousand, currently it's. Twenty-five thousand. Uh, first up on twelve forty is Morgan Early, Deputy Attorney General. Good morning.
Good morning, Senators. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to come be heard on this bill. Um, I'm a prosecutor who was the Department of Attorney General. Um, this type of offense is one of the worst types of public corruption that can occur, obviously. When you have elected or department heads, elected officials or department heads accepting bribes. Um, it 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 corrupts the process in a way that can very much damage um the public's best interest and also the public's trust in government. Um, and so this bill would accomplish creating a separate offense specific to bribes relating to elected officials and department heads. Um, it would penalize not only the person accepting the bribe, uh but also the person, anybody who would offer a bribe. Um, it would obviously raise the ceiling of the fine available. One of the purposes of that is to be able to collect the amount that a bribe might be. Um, and it gives the the court, the judges, the power to impose penalties that could recoup that entire amount, but it also serves a deterrent purpose where. You're hoping to send a message to the public and to the elected um. The elected officials in our state that uh this is a very serious offense and you will be penalized heavily if you engage in bribery. So, uh, I'm here for any question.
Thank you very much. Next is uh Gary Cam, Campaign Spending Commission. Morning again.
Yeah, good morning, Gensler Rhodes, Vice Chair Gabbert, members of the committees. The the commission supports um any. Uh, uh. Criminal penalties for pu- public corruption. Um, also for violations of the campaign spending law. The commission recommends in this case that the um bill be amended to. Uh, replace department head with just pu- public employees, I. Mission believes that um if there is bribery that's going on, it's 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 more likely executed at the level where. You know, people actually do things and not just they talk about policy. It's the actual functioning of the. Um, the public office that that is more likely where the bribery will take place.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next we have Brenna Hashimoto, Director of Department of Human Resource Development. Good morning.
Good morning. Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, I'm Brenna Hashimoto, and I'm here um to express our support for. Uh, SB twenty uh twelve forty, and also to offer comments on section three related to the Commission on Salaries. I'll stand on our written testimony and be available for any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you. Next is Andrew Crossland. In support. Lynn Mattasal in support, uh, Manehel Eluzayo. In support, Emerson in support, Carolyn Carrera in opposition. And if any of you are here online, let me know and you can testify. Sabrina Sumner. In support, Parker Bode for. Little Police Department in support. James Pearl in support. Kate Kilani Ho in support. Jeric Maderos Garcia in support, Terry Morakami in support, and Junior Jupai in support. I don't see anybody here. Is there anybody else who would like to testify in SB twelve forty? Okay, seeing none, members' questions?
Yeah, uh, yes, I do. Attorney General. Thank you very much. Attorney General, please.
Well, thanks to the Attorney General.
Yes, I understand.
Help me, Deputy.
Deputy Attorney General, okay, so my question is, um, the two, based upon the testimony where somebody testified that. Somebody accepted like two million dollars worth of product, wouldn't it be far more effective to have like a multiplier? With a floor of two hundred fifty thousand?
Um, yes, I know that one of the things to consider is the class of the offense, and right now it's a class B. And so there are gonna be certain limits, it can't just go all the way to infinity. The fine couldn't go all the way to infinity as a class B felony.
What's the maximum?
I'm actually not sure, I'd have to pull that up. Um, but it is something that uh. Keep in mind that there are other mechanisms that judges can use to recoup money, for example, um. Fines are not the only way, if if there's, I don't know actually how you would end up with a victim under a. Um, bribery statute per se, but you have restitution is obviously one mechanism that sometimes judges can recoup money. Um, but there are other ways that that money, if there was two million dollars uh of property, for example, there are. Uh, the civil departments and the civil divisions in the department can do forfeiture of property and and other things like that, that that. The department would be looking at more than one way to try to recoup that. Um, that miss, you know, misga- badly gained goods or badly gained property.
Has the deputy attorney, I mean, has the Attorney General's Office not not doing civil asset forfeiture, but tried to? Um, and. Well, in this case, it has to be bribery, tried to recoup, um. The fees based upon the hours worked by the Attorney General's Office, like in this. Latest multi, well, there were multiple multi bribery cases, right?
Hmm.
Um, in Honolulu was like the planning department, which I think messed up my street over. Or Ilili, Ilili, by something that they did, but um, has the Attorney General tried to recoup like the hours worked? For as a, as a. Penalty?
That's a really interesting question. I I don't know the answer off the top of my head, if that has been done, um.
But is that something that's workable? Because I'm looking at the two hundred fifty thousand dollar fine. May not be enough compete if it was a two million dollar.
Right.
Bribe, or like. What I'm thinking about my street over in Moy Ilili kind of screwed up traffic. Because of what the planning department approved two years ago.
Yeah, understood, and I I think what I can say is that the department's always gonna look for some way to use the existing law to recoup. That ill gotten gain, right? Um, could be assumed we could use forfeiture, if there's a way we could try to use restitution, different things like that to to ask the judge for.
But you would not be opposed right now, that if we add in a multiplier with a floor of two hundred fifty thousand?
Uh, my concern would just be the way that the current bill is phrased. I think there would be a problem given class B designation. I'd have to get back to you to double check what the actual.
What about also as what um? Campaign spending says, to expand it to any official, because like. It wouldn't have covered the Honolulu Planning Department if we just made it department head.
I think that's a good suggestion.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions, members? Okay, you can stay there, please. Um. So the bri- the bribery statute proposed in the bill is very similar to the existing bribery statute. Are are there any due process issues with having the same crime penalized differently depending on who's involved?
Any due process concerns?
So I guess it's a, I can't remember the name of the case, Monica, if the if the crime, if the elements are the same, but the. The penalty is different, or if it applies differently to different, different classes of people, generally that's a no-no. So that's. That was my question, and is that, is that a problem?
Um, I wouldn't dare to shoot from the hip on a case that I'm not familiar with, I haven't read that particular case. Um, I, the only comment I could offer, and I I can read the case and get back to you, Senator, um, the only comment that I can offer is that. Uh, the elements are different if we have to prove that they're an elected official or department head, that would actually become part of the jury instruction and it would change that element. But I'm not sure if that would satisfy what that case is concerned with.
But if we, if we had the, if we had the existing statute running concurrently, if we pass this bill and we have these two bri- bri-. Class B bribery statutes running along next to each other. And they're basically the same thing, except that one applies to, right now, elected officials. Then. You could theoretically, I guess, be charged out anyway, that, okay, I I won't press you farther on, um.
Do you mind if I ask you the spelling of that? Is it M O N I K A, the case?
M O D I C A.
Modica.
Modica.
Okay.
Modica, sorry. Um. Uh, the other question I had was really a follow up, I'm trying to understand one of the insurers question. I mean, if you, you can always get, the the fine, it doesn't, that's not to. Get the, you can always go for the money that somebody has stolen, right? I mean, that's that's automatically, you get that back, or you?
As part of the judgment, yeah, presumably, it's a different.
The fine, the fine is a penalty phase, it doesn't have anything to do, okay?
Yeah.
Alright, members other questions? Although, thank you very much, I do have a question for um. Uh, let's see. Uh, Director Hashimoto, if you don't mind. Can you just talk this a little more about the department's concern about forecasting salaries in advance and the request to apply the date changes only to apply to the legislature?
Sure, so the way that the uh Commission on Salaries currently works is they are convened um every six years. And they make recommendations, so they convene in November of of every six years, so the next one will be. In twenty twenty-four, so next November, and they uh review the salaries um. Of comparable positions and economic situation of the state, and they make a recommendation to the legislature. That will go into effect the following July first. Um, of the following year.
Not for legislators?
But not for the legislators, right, so there is already a delay, and they're looking at salaries six years out, which is obviously. Um, a challenge to try to forecast um how the way salaries will will look six years from the time that they're actually studying them. So by making the changes that are suggested in this measure, it would have the effect of freezing salaries. For the executive branch um and for the judiciary, similar to. Um, what's in effect for the legislature, which means that there's a.
I'm getting out my violin already.
It it's, it it's a matter of fairness, um, they're already looking. Essentially a crypto ball, and what salaries are gonna do.
Fairness.
Pretty far in the bands.
Fairness for whom?
For those individuals who are appointed and judges.
Okay, alright.
They who don't have the the benefit of negotiating salaries or being represented by collective bargaining.
Okay. Alright, thank you. Uh, for Mr. Cam, are you still here? No, I guess not, okay.
No, he's slightly.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, I, you know, I think you've really already answered this, so I was just gonna ask you why you were wanting to expand the penalties to. Beyond just the department has an elected official, but I think you already answered that, it's just, it's not the only place it's happening, so I apologize for bringing you back up, thank you. Okay, members, any other questions? Alright, if not, we'll move on. Uh, SB eight seven, making appropriations for claims against the state. Uh, first up on twelve seventy-seven. Is. Uh, Karen Inagaki, Deputy Attorney General, good morning.
Good morning, Gensler Rhodes, Vice Chair Gabbert, and members of the committee. Karen Inagaki, Deputy Attorney General. Um, so the bill currently contains nine claims, and those claims are described in our written testimony uh attached as um A. Attachment A, uh but since the bill was introduced, we have three new claims. And um they were resolved for an additional seven hundred twenty-one thousand, six hundred thirty-four dollars and twenty-five cents. Our attachment B describes those new claims. Um, so we would ask that this bill be passed uh with amendments to add the new claims.
Alright, thank you. Next is Ed Sniffen, Director of Department of Transportation. Says he's on Zoom. Don't see him in sport, next to Shana Wailana Kukila. Also on Zoom. There you are, good morning.
Hmm, good morning, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Law senators, um SB twelve seventy-seven, which appropriates funds for claims against the state and its employees. Should be amended to include this language, or possibly in the future, you could amend it in future um legislation. The state shall not be li- held liable for their legal acts done by state employees who violate their oath of office and who operate outside the bounds of their jurisdiction. Their job description or state policies. Notwithstanding, the state shall be held liable if a state policy or statute. Violated by a state employee is inconsistent with federal statute. Um, if government employees, including our legislators, are held personally accountable for their actions, they will not be so quick to break the law. Additionally, the taxpayers are left to pay for these crimes year after year with money and judicial resources that are already in short supply. As a taxpayer, I myself am sick and tired of paying for the repeated abuses of power that allows the state to cover financially with our hard earned taxpayer income. Our tax dollars need to show more of a return on investment, and public corruption and liability it poses to the state is an unnecessary drain on our finite resources. Which could go to other important needs such as providing access to healthcare for our women, children, and vulnerable pop- populations. Therefore, it is imperative that bad government actors should be held personally accountable for their crimes, which includes financial responsibility. Paid directly to those whom they have harmed, especially the most vulnerable in our society. And I would say that although there are um remedies such as suing people, many people do not have the resources to sue others. So the state should um look at um. Recovering these damages um through legislation from bad government actors and those who, um, like you just. Talked about, those who accept bribes or do other um kinds of unethical behaviors. Thank you.
Thank you very much, thanks for waiting around so long. Uh, next up, uh, that's all the written, all the test. All the testifiers who signed up on SB twelve seventy-seven, anyone else, anyone else wishing to testify in SB twelve seventy-seven? Seeing none, members' questions? Senator Alafonte?
I have a question for the attorney, uh representative from the Attorney General's Office. And I'm sorry, the pronunciation of your last name, is it Inagaki?
Inagaki.
Inagaki, um Deputy Attorney General Inagaki, I read through your testimony, and I just have two questions. Uh, first is, um, does this come up? Um, annually every session with a bill for settlement of claims against the state that we have to appropriate?
Yes.
Okay, um, I did ask a question during the WAM JDC briefing to the Attorney General about if. Um, the Attorney General's Office had enough funding for the year uh for that, so this is more just of a comment, and then. And then my second question specifically has to do with your attachment B, which is the new settlements that you have, um, and I'm just curious. Um, there are two of the miscellaneous claims, where it was a claimant requesting issuance of an outdated check, it seems like a very substantial. Amount, you know, over a hundred thousand for each of those incidents. Could you describe, perhaps maybe in this public forum, if you're able to, what? Those two particular outdated checks were for?
Uh, well, my understanding is the Community Empowerment Resources, um, it's it's a nonprofit that's attached to the Department of Health. Um, and it's uh, it's to help with operating funds, so what happened was they lost their check, um, they were, this was. Um, during COVID, where they were closed down, the check came in, it fell behind some boxes and, and then they found it, so um, they they did. Um, state that they were gonna take efforts to make sure that it doesn't happen again. Um, the other one is a, is a tax refund, and what happened in that one was uh, he um, the address was not accurate. And so it was um sent to a wrong address and he never received it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Inagaki, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, members other questions? Okay, I have a couple, uh, hang on just one second. Regarding the claim for seventy-nine thousand one hundred and ninety-nine arising from Honolulu Civil Beads' request for the Attorney General to investigate report. Who made the determination that that report should not be made public?
I don't have that information, I can get that to you um.
I'd appreciate it. What what, and and while you're at it, what was the basis for that decision? I mean, it it just. It, it's just mind boggling to me that when there's a report that the, the public was entitled to, we fought it and then we lost it. Eighty thousand, seventy nine thousand dollars because we didn't want to turn it over in the first place. So I, it would be very interesting to see, and, and I guess the final question is, well, while you're checking on things. Has, has an internal policy been changed to avoid wasting our money on things like that?
Uh, well, I was not involved in this, so I can't really speak to the thought process. Um, my understanding is that we. Did believe that we were correct in, in holding back, uh, the report and I can get back to you as to the reasons.
Yeah, but we weren't correct. That's the point. I mean, we, we lost that case, so.
Right, but based on our analysis, we, we did believe we're correct. Um, I, I, you know, that, that's why we have litigation, I think, when, when parties disagree.
Yeah, okay. Um, so following up on Senator Alafonte's questions, does the state track, uh, unc- uncashed checks? I mean, do we know what we've got that's still hanging out there?
I don't know because, you know, it, it does come from different sources. So like if it's a taxed refund. Um, you know, I, I can't speak to the different departments that issue the checks, like, um, you know, DAGs would also issue checks. You know, um, so it happens in, in all kinds of businesses. So it's really hard to say. Um, so we would have to actually check with every agency that issues checks because it could happen, you know, in, in any circumstance.
Do, do the, do, does the, whichever agency, uh, issued the check, do they have to go back and stop payment on it? Or it, it's just, they just don't do anything and it never leaves the account?
Yeah, it expires after a year, so it generally it just expires on its own terms.
And then on the amount, it's, wh- wh- does the state have to pay interest on that amount? Or is it, it's the, that was the final liquidated damage or liquidated amount?
Yeah, it's just that it's due to check, so they, they reissue the check.
Okay. Um, regarding the Kristen Cam versus State of Hawaii claim for repeated sexual assault of a middle school student, the testimony states that the plaintiff claimed that the Board of Education. Department of Education and the school principal failed to take actions to protect the student despite having received reports that the other students had previously engaged in misconduct. Who's supposed to investigate those claims? Is that DOE or is that somebody at A G?
Um, it, it normally starts with the school, so it would be, um, internally with the, the principal. Or, you know, uh, within the school itself with that, that's occurring.
All right. Cause, I mean, yeah, I, I, I'm reluctant to go on and on about it, but these are just appalling cases. And then, of course, we lose a bunch of money in addition to the fact that there's a human tragedy involved. So do you, or. Who, who advises the school? Does DOE have their own attorneys or is it A, is it the A G's office advising them on how to handle stuff like this?
There is a division that, um, provides advice and counsel to each department.
In the A G's? Does it, does DOE have their own attorneys too?
I, I don't think so. I'm not sure about that.
Okay, no, neither one. That's why I asked. Okay, thank you very much. Members, other questions? If not, thank you for being here.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on to S P twelve ninety five, proposed amendments to Article Seven, Sections twelve and thirteen of Hawaii Constitution to provide for. Tax increment financing. Uh, first up on twelve ninety five is Dan Wicker, Deputy Director for D B I.
Sorry.
Or his design.
Yeah, well, no, I don't, but, uh, happy to be here. Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair and members of the committee. Uh, we strongly support this bill and just a bill to answer questions. We have, um, our Office of Planning Sustainable Development here as well.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Well, next is Tammy Lee, uh, State Department of Transportation. Uh, in support, next is Harrison Rue, uh, Plan, Office of Planning and Sustainable Development. In support, okay. Tommy Amachika, Tax Foundation of Hawaii with comments. That's all the written, that's all the testimony I have on S P twelve ninety five. Anyone else wish to testify in S P twelve ninety five? If not, members' questions? I don't have any either. I'll, I'm gonna take a short recess here. It's just, uh, maybe three or four minutes recess. All right, coming back, this is the Judiciary Committee coming back in on our nine thirty agenda. Uh, let's see, we were, uh, we just did twelve ninety five, so next up is S P thirteen ninety eight. Relating to conformity to the Internal Revenue Code, Conformance Hawaii State and Income and Estate and Generations Giving Transfer Taxes to the Internal Revenue Code. Eighty six as amended on, as of December thirty one, twenty twenty two. First up on thirteen ninety eight is Gary Suganuma, Director of Department of Trans- uh, Taxation, who is designated. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair Rhodes, uh, Vice Chair Gabbard and other members of the committee. My name's Denise Inoue. I'm the Department of Taxation's Administrative Rules Officer. And I would like to, um, say that we support this bill and, um, stand on our testimony, but would like to add in addition. That while we've been reviewing the, uh, Consolidated Appropriations Act of twenty twenty three, there is another provision in there that we have not listed. On our testimony, which is the Health Extenders Act of twenty twenty two. And there's a provision in there for telehealth that we do adopt, so we'd also like to include that in our testimony. Um, Section two twenty three C is allowing the, um. To be more specific, it's allowing the healthcare provisions, um, for, it sends this temporary safeguard under which a plan may cover. Telehealth and other remote care services without a deductible plan to be beginning in two, twenty twenty three or twenty twenty four. So we do adopt that section right now. Um, we wanna make sure that it's included in our testimony. So that it's included in the adoption for the twenty twenty two changes.
Just turn, oh, okay, yeah, that's right.
Okay, so other than that, everything else is pretty much the same. Um, the bills that have been passed from federal. The Inflation Reduction Act of twenty twenty two did not make very many changes that would affect Hawaii's taxation. Uh, the Secure Act, um, two point oh Act of twenty twenty two has a lot of changes to the pension. Um, provisions under the federal law that we adopt right now, and we're carefully reviewing them to make sure that. Any of the changes made may not be in, but, um, conflict with Hawaii. So for parity reasons, most of them we do adopt. And we're still looking at it since they just signed the bill at the end of December. So we're still in, I'm looking at that, but. Pretty much what we've gone through all the way is, um. We adopt all those changes. The one thing that we put in here that we wanted to make sure that everybody knew. Was the required minimum distributions is changing and it's increasing. Because that's most of the phone calls that we get in the department is people asking if we're gonna adopt the R M V.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. I'll be here for any more questions if you have any.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Tom Yamachika, Tax Foundation of Hawaii. With comments, and that's all, that's all the testifiers who have signed up for S P thirteen ninety eight. Uh, members, questions on thirteen ninety eight? If not, if you come back up, I have a question, a couple of questions for you. Um. Okay, I'm just trying to remember how this bill's actually drafted. Do we have to, do we actually have to put that language in that you were suggesting?
No, um, the way that the language is written, it should adopt it, but we just want to make sure it was clear.
We don't need to change.
No, nothing needs to change right now, yeah.
The other question I had was, it seems to me that, um, years ago, I think during the Trump administration, they made some pretty major changes to the gift and estate tax.
Correct.
And we didn't accept all of that. We left the, the threshold lower, if I remember correctly.
Right, and that's, um.
Never changed that.
We haven't changed that, and that's in our statute.
And this doesn't change.
Correct.
That either. Okay, okay, thank you. Other questions, members? Okay, if not, we'll move on to the next bill. Thank you for being here. Uh, next up is S B fifteen thirty eight. Uh, this takes appropriations to the judiciary for capital improvement projects. Uh, first up is Rod Miley, Administrator Director of the Courts. Uh, they're in support. That's all of, only testifiers who have signed up on this one, no one to ask any questions of, so we'll go ahead and move on to S B. Fifteen forty three. This would establish a comprehensive system of public financing for all candidates seeking election in the state and county's public office in the state of Hawaii. Uh, but would not preclude people from using the current system as it exists. First up on S B fifteen forty three is Gary Cam. Uh, General Counsel Campaign Spending Commission.
Morning again. How's good morning again, Chair Gabbard, members of the committee. The, um, commission's forced the intent of this bill and we're actually still reviewing it. But what we can, what we would like to recommend, uh, at this point. Is that the, uh, maximum amount for candidates running for the Board of Trustees for OHA. Uh, be raised from, um, uh, twenty thousand to forty thousand dollars. That would put them at ninety seven point five percent of the, um, average spent by the winners in, uh, recent elections. Um. Right now for offices other than OHA, uh, the range is, um. Eighty seven to a hundred and thirty three percent. Uh, OHA is at forty seven percent. So we're asking that OHA be raised to forty thousand dollars. The other thing is the, um, minimum qualifying contributions. It, it looks like, um. Aside from the Senate and candidates for Senate and House of Representatives. It looks like the drafter of the bill, um, when determining the minimum amount of qualifying contributions required. Uh, basically went, uh, went two five percent of the, of the maximum amounts. Per office. When you look at the Senate and the House, um, basically two hundred for the Senate and one hundred for the House. When you compare that to their maximum amount, it looks like for them, for these offices, it's pegged at. Uh, point twenty percent of the, uh, maximum, uh, 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 comprehensive amount. So we're asking that, uh, that this committee change the, uh, minimum qualifying contributions for Senate from two hundred to two fifty. That would put that, that at point two five percent. And the, for the House, uh, amended from one hundred to one hundred twenty five, and that would put that at. Point two five percent. And lastly, we, the commission asks you.
I'm sorry, I have to ask you to stop at that point. I wasn't paying attention to the time. You'll, you'll probably get some questions. Thank you. Uh, Daniel Foley, Commission to Improve Standards of, uh, Official Conduct. In support, Nate Hicks.
Present on Zoom, Chair.
Uh, also in support. Oh, I'm sorry, you're here. I was looking for you on Zoom. It's all right, not necessary.
Uh, thanks for, uh, allowing me to testify, uh, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. I, I'm super excited this day's here. I mean, I've been wanting clean elections in Hawaii for years now, and so to get this opportunity, I'm super excited. Um. We need to end mon- end, uh, money's influence in politics. Uh, right now, uh, winning elections requires a lot of money. And right now, a few amount of donors are providing a significant amount of campaign funds. Uh, the last election cycle, nine hundred and eighty donors. Provided half of all of the money received by, uh, candidate committees. Uh, each of these nine hundred and eighty donors gave at least six thousand dollars during the last election cycle. That's a significant consolidation of political power, um, that is not very democratic, right? Uh, this bill would allow, uh, candidates, people running for office to instead receive funds. Based on support from their own constituents where it belongs, right? That's how our democracy should work. Uh, this is a program that's more than viable, right? We know that it worked on Big Island and County Council races in twenty ten and twenty twelve. Maine and Connecticut have these programs statewide and they're very popular. Huge amount of support, huge amount of participation. Uh, very happy that the Campaign Spending Commission here would help implement the program is also in support. Uh, and the opportunity is now, right? This is the chance we have to do this. Uh, given all the corruption scandals and all the eyes that are focused on the governmental reforms we're gonna propose, this is our chance. If we don't take it now. When is the change to free ourselves from the political influence that money has on our elections gonna occur? So, uh, thank you again for the opportunity to testify and hoping passes bill. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Next to Margaret Willie, uh, Democratic Party, District Eight. In support, William Bagasol for Democratic Party Hawaii Legislative Committee. Also in support, Gary Hooser, Plano Hawaii Initiative. In support. Sergio Alcubilla, Executive Director of Hawaii Worker Center. I saw him. Good morning.
Morning, Chair, uh, Vice Chair. Thank you for, uh, so much for this opportunity to, to give testimony and support of this bill. My name is Serge Alcubilla. I'm the Executive Director for the Hawaii Worker Center. I stand here, um. Uh, representative of, of an organization that stands for a lot of our low wage immigrant workers. And, uh, you know, I'll be the first to say, uh, I mean, I know many of you all have been, all of you that standing on the other side have been through the grind of elections. Right? And we all know, um, the toll that it takes on our families. We all know the, the toll that it takes on our finances. But at the same time, you know, we know, uh, when you're making those fundraising calls, you know. You know, if a thousand dollar donor picks up or someone that's giving you five dollars, you know, you're, you know where your attention is being, being given to, and that's just. It's part of human nature. But what happens in, on the impact on workers, right? When we're fighting for something with a tip penalty. Right? On the other side, it's gonna be the Restaurant Association, they're gonna be fighting against it. When we're fighting for paid family sick leave. On the other side, that's gonna be against it, of course, are the businesses, right? When we're, um. Fighting for, for mandatory paid breaks, on the other side, it's gonna be Amazon, right? So, I mean, how are workers gonna be able to compete with that when they're give, when they're able to give five, ten, twenty dollars in donations? For some of these corporate PACs that are giving thousands of dollars. So really, from the worker's perspective, that's where it's an un, un. Equal playing field, unlevel playing field when it comes to our democracy. And, you know, it's just second, I, I, I stand here as a former candidate. As I mentioned, I know just the toll that it takes. Um, on our finances and just the amount of time that we spend fundraising, trying to raise money, uh, you know, for, for the campaign. But our life would be so much easier, you know, right, if, um. You know, if elections, if we were able to pass this bill and we spent more of our time campaigning and speaking with constituents rather than just fundraising. Again, this is a worker issue. Uh, this helps level, level the playing field for workers. This helps level, the, the, level the playing field for our working class. And makes our democracy more fair. Uh, again, my name is Serge Alcubilla and I want to, and we stand in support of this, this measure. Thank you very much. Uh, Chair Rhodes for introducing this.
Thanks for coming down. Bernie Lockhart, Common Cause Hawaii. In support, David McCluskey. Go ahead, uh, somebody, yeah. Mr. McCluskey, go ahead. Good morning.
Yeah, hi, uh, I, I submitted written testimony. Uh, by the way, I really like how you moved, uh, committee hearings very, uh, expeditiously in your state. Much better than, uh, Connecticut. I was on, uh, Governor Rel's, uh, Campaign Finance Working Group. Uh, it was not a pretty process. Yeah, we had opposition even in my own party to go forward with, uh, uh, public financing. But ultimately, the bill passed, uh, bipartisanly in both chambers, eighty two to sixty five. In the, in the House and twenty seven to eight in, in the Senate. Uh, originally, the House Speaker hated the bill. I, I can tell you. I did, I described the work of the, the working group to him and he hated it, but ultimately he agreed to move the bill forward and he did vote for it. Uh, I just wanted to say, you know, I was an incumbent legislator, right? I, it changes hard for, uh, legislators, especially on subject. That they know a lot about is like getting reelected, but this did not endanger most of our incumbents. Many of them were concerned about it, but it was, it, when we, after we passed it, it wasn't a huge upheaval of incumbents losing their seats. The ones who lost their seats were the ones who were not in touch with their district, not communicating. And it, 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 and it wasn't the public financing system that ultimately did them in. It was that, they, ultimately it was their lack of engagement. With their constituency, uh, because the, the funding is equal to both the incumbent and the challengers. I did wanna say also, since we passed the bill, online co- uh, donating has increased exponentially. And it really makes it easy to qualify. I, I know people that under, currently that can qualify within a couple of days, if not a day. So I, I urge you to take this step. It really does liberate you from chasing dollars. It's a much easier system soliciting. Small donations from people in the towns that you represent, and it does a- allow you to really vote the way you wanna vote on an issue instead of. Af- afraid of upsetting a group that can dump a lot of money into your election. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
All right, thank you very much. Thanks for spending the time with us. Uh, next is Noelia Rodriguez, uh, for Global Hope. Uh, in support, Charis Potter, also for Global Hope and Support. Uh, Marky Mor- Morino, Morino, Hui Pak in support, R A Colbertson for Hui Pak in support. Nikos Leverance, I think I saw.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, uh, members, Nikos Leverance, uh, testifying on behalf of myself today. It was my honor to serve on the Commission to Improve Standards. It was my honor to serve on the Commission to Improve Standards of Conduct and my written testimony uh has several quotations from our final report. And we thank you for introducing this bill. And we, I think that uh it represents a tremendous opportunity to mend the relationship between the public and its government. And mahalo uh for your efforts on this front, Senator.
Okay, thank you. Next is Andrew Crossland in opposition. Hey. Yeah, okay, okay, got you. Uh then we have a page uh entirely of in supports individuals. Another page of most all but one, two in support. And then another page of everyone in support. Evan Weber was going to be here in person. Uh there you are. So another page of in entirely in support and Mr. Weber is at the last one on that page. Good morning.
Oh, Halkako. Uh mahalo for the opportunity to speak in support of this bill. Um I'm here as an individual, but also uh on behalf of our organization, our Hawaii um and our eight thousand supporters from every corner of the island, Kamaaina, Kanakamali, Keke Kupuna, et cetera. Um and yeah, I want to start with some just technical comments uh to make sure that I get them in and then I'll speak a little bit more from the heart. Um on the technical front, wanted to request or recommend that uh for Maui County, the uh quantity allocated to candidates is increased. Um my understanding is that the numbers as uh as Gary Cam was saying are sort of uh calculated based on the averages from past elections, more or less. Um and uh right now, there's thirty thousand dollars allocated for Maui County. But when you look at the winning average for twenty twenty-two, that number increased to fifty-eight thousand. This is because of probably a permanent shift in the nature of competitiveness of the Maui County Council uh that is kind of back and forth between two factions and probably isn't going away anytime soon. There's been a lot of reporting around this. Um so in order to actually make those allocations competitive, uh I re- request or recommend increasing that number to north of fifty thousand, maybe sixty thousand. Um I have attached calculations in there that sort of back this up. Um some of the spending for the winners in that race was north of a hundred fifty thousand dollars or a hundred thousand dollars. Uh and it's a lot of big money interests, which we're trying to get uh rid of using this bill. Um also attached to report kind of documenting some of the perniciousness of the influence of uh big money spending in Maui County Council where we have some actual uh government contractors who are donating tens of thousand dollars and then receiving millions of dollars in council contracts. This is a real serious problem. Um but yeah, this is one of the most important bills you'll consider this cycle. And um it's really important for young people, working people across the islands uh to restore our government, uh faith in government.
Thank you very much. Thanks for being here. Uh okay, so then we have another page that's mostly in support, one, two, three, four, four in opposition. Uh Kristen Alice, Hope Services Hawaii. Hello again.
Hello, thank you for hearing my testimony. I am here um on behalf of Hope Services Hawaii, the largest nonprofit homeless services provider on Hawaii Island in strong support of this bill. For me personally, this is the most important bill of the session because it's what we would call in debate, an a priori issue. We can't look at anything else until we look at this and make fix the root of the problem. Um we may not need Senator Alwa's bill to tax out of state real estate if not for this. Um because the housing crisis, with all due respect, was created by a governance problem. Um and the legislators who do try to do the right thing might be overshadowed by the ones who um are not, who are beholden to those who donated to their campaigns the most. It's the reciprocity principle. When someone does something for you, you want to do something back for them. And you that can get to even the most honest person who gets into office. Um so how are we going to fix the homelessness crisis without fixing this first? And without looking at what we can do to make sure that these decisions aren't being made in the interest of the people and not in the interest of chasing dollars to get reelected? We also want you to come out and have your boots on the ground, come out and point in time count and see what it's really like. One last thing I want to end on. I reached out to Representative Umbreen Rana, who recently was elected to the Main House of Representatives. And she says, I was publicly financed and it's the only way it was possible for me to run as a working class person. It goes a long way in removing barriers to allow young people to run for office and people of color. As a twenty-eight-year-old, first-generation American, this made it possible for me. Let's make it possible for the people like Umbreen in Hawaii. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Uh next, we have Robin Knox. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Committee. Thanks for the opportunity to testify. I am in support of fifteen forty-three. Um I was a candidate for Maui County Council. Um I did not prevail. One of the most shocking things during the campaign that happened was as soon as my intent was known in the community, a wealthy member of our community, someone with whom I did have some political alignment, came to me and said, you should not run for office. I should run instead because you cannot afford to run. And that really made me angry because I think every citizen, every voter should have an equal right to run for office. And that the criteria for who's a good candidate should not be their personal wealth or their ability to attract large donations from wealthy people. In my race, my opponent had more than a hundred thousand dollars um greater uh budget than I did, even though I did an admirable job of forty-four thousand dollars of uh fundraising. And um that and also got three hundred thou- the my opponent got three hundred thousand dollars worth of um advertising from a super PAC. And most of the money came for that campaign came from off-island and outstate. Um it name recognition is important in political races and there was no way I could compete. Maui County races are island-wide. To send out a flyer, even one flyer to every voter is more than thirty thousand dollars. My opponent sent out flyers every day in the weeks coming up to the election and I could not even afford one. I would like to ask you also to increase the amount for Maui County Council candidates because it is a um countywide, three islands um campaign. You have in this bill six hundred thousand dollars for the mayor's race, which is also um countywide. And you only have thirty thousand for county council candidates. I think you should set it at like ninety-eight percent of the highest value.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate you sticking around to testify. Uh next, we have Senator Craig Hickman. I'm sorry, I don't know which state you're from, but uh if you're there. Oh, Maine, from Maine.
As you start to read, okay. There we are.
Good afternoon for you.
That is correct, sir. Uh thank you. I am on uh iPad, which I don't know how to use. In any event, I'll be brief, I hope. Uh Chair Rhodes, Vice Chair Gabbert, and just members of the Senate Committee on Judiciary. My name is Craig Hickman and I represent a Senate district in the great state of Maine. I testify in support of S P one four five three relating to public financing for candidates to public office. You have my testimony. It's got history of the program in Maine. I'll just close with my conclusion. Thanks to the people of Maine who gave us our Clean Election Act, there are no large contributions funneling into candidates for state office. Private money plays a diminished role in elections in Maine. Candidates compete on a level playing field. Voters have more choices with more first-time candidates, more women, more people of color, and more contested races. Clean election campaigns are different with more time for voter contact and a strictly limited budget. Legislators have a more straightforward relationship with lobbyists than did those who run traditional. The Maine Clean Election Act is a success thanks to the sound principles on which it is based, the continued enthusiasm of Maine people, and the careful attention to successive legislatures. In each cycle since two thousand, led by the Legislative Committee that I now chair, our legislature has sorted through many bills, consulted with staff at the Ethics Commission, the Attorney General's Office with legal analysts, listens to citizens, elected officials, and made the necessary small adjustments to make a good system better. The model here in Maine is constitutional, workable, and voluntary. It engages more citizens than private financing can. It enlarges the pool of potential candidates as you as you've already heard, providing resources and creating opportunity for civic-minded people, young and old, who lack personal wealth and have no desire to court private donors. For countless Maine legislators, including myself, from a great variety of backgrounds, clean elections is what made it possible for me and them to run when it serves. I hope Hawaii joins Maine and Connecticut and join us at a statewide level. Thank you for the time and attention today. Uh I hope that Hawaii can put this into practice. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much. Thanks for spending some time with us. Really appreciate it. Uh next, we have Washington for Equitable Representation. Is that, does it have a separate? Or is that Jordan Hocker?
No, no, that's.
Okay, Washington for Equitable Representation. Um I'm assuming that's an in support and then Jordan Hocker. There, there are a few. Hello.
Sorry, everyone. Um actually, I'm not sorry. I have my aunt here with me and um she's a little bussy, so I'm trying to make this brief. I just want to thank um Chair Rhodes and Vice Chair Gabbert and the um rest of the members of this Senate Committee for allowing me to testify. My name is Jordan Hocker and I live on the island of Maui. Uh first, things first is I am a mother and a community advocate. I recently ran for Maui County Council. Um I was approached after my engagement in public government um about a year into the pandemic, asking if I would run. Part of that is because I understood what working-class people were going through. The other part of it was no one else wanted to touch the incumbent. Um who at, based on the previous election, had sixty thousand dollars in her coffers um while running unopposed. I never thought I wanted to be, I never wanted to be a politician, um but I do like the concept of being a public servant. If you know, Maui County has had a recent um high-profile cases in terms of government corruption. Essentially, what the FBI investigation concluded was something we all knew as voters in Maui County was happening. Um and our trust in our systems is dismally low. And if you looked at our voter turnout in the primary, um and really overall is thirty-five percent in this election, I think that those numbers could be higher, but we're losing an entire group of people who just don't have faith in the system. And they don't have faith in the system with good costs. Um from where I'm standing, I ran for office pregnant. I took a month off after birthing my daughter and I got back on the campaign trail. And I was my campaign manager, I was my graphic designer, I was my treasurer, I did all of these jobs. And the one that I felt took away the most and made me pander to certain people other than rather than others was the fundraising aspect of it. I got within ten thousand, almost ten thousand votes of the incumbent while raising about a seventh of what her budget was. The reality is, is that people like me would run for office if the barriers weren't high. I don't come from a background of wealth. I am a working-class person who understands what working-class people are going through. And we need more people in those positions.
Okay, thank thank you very much. Thanks for spending the time with us. Um that's all the written, that's all the testifiers I have. Is somebody else online there that wants to testify on uh S B fifteen forty-three?
Aloha, this is uh Comms Member Keanu Rollins Fernandez.
Okay, go ahead.
Aloha, uh aloha Chair Rhodes, Vice Chair Gabbert, and honorable committee members. Mahalo for this opportunity to testify in strong support of H B fifteen forty-three uh relating to public financing. Um and uh mahalo to you in particular, Chair Rhodes, for introducing this measure. I'll echo the reasons given by previous testifiers in support why passing this bill is imperative in addressing corruption in politics. I have participated in our state's partial public funding program for the last three elections and prevailed each time. It truly made a big difference for me as a grassroots candidate who represents the voices of our communities that do not have as much capital. While not an expert in public funding programs at large, I do have a lot of experience interacting with our own program. Um I absolutely support this bill, but I do have a few questions that I'd love to uh discuss further. Uh my questions include, uh when would the program start so that candidates would be able to begin uh their campaigning? Would candidates be disqualified from participating in the Comprehensive Public Funding Program if they received donations above the five dollars prior to applying? Uh and if not disqualified, would the candidates return the contributions? Um or would they donate it to uh this, you know, back to the state? Uh what would happen to excess funding after the election is completed? If it's required that funds uh not expended be returned, uh that would put those candidates who participate at a disadvantage to those who don't do not participate in the program because the carryover funds enable those candidates to pay for campaign activities in non-election years. Uh so mahalo for your attention on these um questions and mahalo for the opportunity to testify in strong support.
Thank you very much. Uh anyone else wishing to testify in S B fifteen forty-three? Okay, one, just one second. So members, um we're supposed to be out of here already, so I think what I'm going to do, we have a couple more bills on the agenda. We will pick up with S G fifteen forty-three now that the testifying is over. We'll pick up with questions on fifteen forty-three on Thursday. What's our hearing on Thursday? I'll go for nine twenty-five then on on enough on Thursday to pick up the let this. The the questioning for S B fifteen forty-three won't take any more testimony and then the other bills that are on the agenda. Um members, but I would like to vote on the stuff that we've already uh talked about today. That's okay. It's straight into voting. That acceptable.
Can I just have one question to Mr. Cam and maybe if you can come back with that or would you prefer to wait till Thursday?
If you want to check with him, uh if you don't mind, we'll just talk to him offline. We can catch up Thursday. Okay, thank you. All right, so back to beginning of the agenda, S B thirty-four is the first one out. Um okay, so what I've decided to do is to defer this technically indefinitely. But I've made the offer to Senator Awa that he can come up with um a solution to the problem that we can try again uh before collateral. I I I will need to know what you want to try to do by this front. We need to propose by this prime. Okay, thank you. So it's deferred technically indefinitely, but we may very well come back and take a look at that again. I'm just going to finish the voting yet. Okay. S B two oh three relating to campaign uh complaints uh relating to complaints alleging violations of campaign spending law. I'm sorry, I forgot to describe what the S B thirty-four was. This would have amended the tax withholding for sale of Hawaii residential real property or non-residence from seven point two five to seventy-five percent. So it's just the withholding part. Okay, moving on to S B two oh three. This allows the Campaign Spending Commission to treat a respondent's failure to explain or otherwise respond to a complaint alleging a violation of campaign spending laws as an admission in a violation that occurred. Recommendation is to pass with some amendments. We'll go ahead and change the presumption to uh, I mean, we'll change it from admission to presumption, so it's more like a default judgment. And then we'll also add that if the respondent has not responded in thirty days from the time of receipt of the complaint. Actually, why don't we say from the mailing of the complaint, since it's done by mail, the presumption kicks in. So there'll be um a period of time where campaign spending won't be able to go ahead with the uh the sunshine meeting. But at some point, the if there's no response from the from the person who's suspected of of breaking the rules, then the Campaign Spending Commission staff can treat that as a presumption as something that was a violation. So those are the amendments. Questions or concerns?
Um.
Yeah, sir.
Yeah, I I appreciate the amendments. I'm still going to vote with reservations. Um the 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 only testify regarding this basically said that this wasn't necessary, so. Still reservations.
Understood. Anyone else? If not, Vice Chair.
Chair's recommendation is to pass S B two zero three, Fifth Amendments. Chair Vice Chair votes aye. Senator LaFonte?
Aye.
Senator Sanvano Ventura?
Reservations.
Senator Awa?
Aye.
Thank you, members. Chair passes.
Thank you. Next up is S B four ninety-four. This requires counties to establish expedited procedures to approve demolition demolition permits for vacant and abandoned presidential properties. I think I'm just I'm going to um delay decision-making until um the end of the nine twenty-five agenda on Thursday. Um I saw some questions, but uh I expect it will move something forward. Okay, so that's nine uh that's four ninety-four deferred until Thursday at the end of the agenda, the nine twenty-five agenda. And next up is S B twelve forty. This establishes bribery of an elected official with department has a Class B felony with a maximum penalty of up to two hundred fifty thousand dollars. Uh recommendation here. Okay, so what I'm going to recommend is that we, instead of creating a new bribery statute, we simply increase the fine from twenty-five thousand dollar max to two hundred and fifty thousand dollar max and apply it to all public service servants, but use the existing bribery statute. And we'll also accept the AG's recommendation to clarify that the imposition of the fine is in addition to any sentence of prisoner probation. We thought there was some ambiguity here. Questions or concerns? If not, Vice Chair.
On the measure, S.P. twelve forty, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments of the members present, are there any no votes or reservations? Hearing none, the measure passes.
Thank you. Next up is S.P. twelve seventy-seven. This is claims against state. Recommendation is to insert the additional seven hundred and twenty-one thousand, six hundred and thirty-four dollars and twenty-five cents in general funds for three new claims that were resolved since the bill's introduction. And we'll also put in the committee report that when, when, that when ways and means may want to reconsider funding sources for the payments. Questions or concerns? If not, Vice Chair.
On S.P. twelve seventy-seven, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments of the members present, any no votes or reservations. Hearing none, the measure passes.
Thank you. Next up is S.P. twelve ninety-five. This would make tax increment financing possible as a constitutional amendment. Recommendation is to pass with technical amendments only. Questions or concerns? If not, Vice Chair.
Chair's recommendation is to pass S.P. twelve ninety-five with technical amendments and the members present, any no votes or reservations. Hearing none, the measure passes.
Thank you. Next up is S.P. thirteen ninety-eight relating to conforming of the Internal Revenue Code. Recommendation here is to pass as is. Questions or concerns? If not, Vice Chair.
On S.P. thirteen ninety-eight, Chair's recommendation is to pass as is. Members present, any no votes or reservations?
No vote.
No vote for Senator Awai. Aye votes for the other members. The measure passes.
Thank you. Next up is S.P. fifteen thirty-eight, makes appropriations to the judiciary for capital improvement projects. Recommendation is to pass it out with amendment. Will include an additional five million dollars for cotton mine and coal light elevator system upgrades and modernization. And that's it. Questions or concerns? If not, Vice Chair on fifteen thirty-eight.
Chair's recommendation is to pass S.P. fifteen thirty-eight with amendments of the members present, are there any no votes or reservations? Hearing none, the measure passes.
Okay, that brings us to the bill that we were just taking testimony on. That's S.P. fifteen forty-three. As I mentioned before, we'll go ahead and roll this, questions and decision-making over until Thursday at nine twenty-five, and we will also roll S.P. fifteen fifty-nine for the hearing and decision-making, and fifteen sixty-one, hearing and decision-making, and fifteen sixty-three to nine twenty-five on Thursday, the ninth, in this room, oh one six. That concludes our business. Thank you for being here.